Good afternoon. We are in the council chambers, city council chambers, city of Marshalltown at 10 West State Street, October, it says October 1, but I think it's October 22. I must have last, the agenda from last week. Oh, thanks, okay. October 22, oriented to time, space, and people, I guess. 5:30 PM. Notice to public, the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during the discussion of any items that are on the agenda. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council, generally, and not to any city consular specifically. It's the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, let's rise those who can for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's start with the roll call.
Who?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Wieren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Thank you. Onto item E, which is mayor, council, and administrative comments. I'd like to start with two things. First, sorry, I missed the last meeting. I had to be in the city of Cleveland Monday through Friday last week, and I was on a jet during the time that the city council meeting was taking place. It's a bad explosion death case that has us out in Cleveland. And second, most of you may know from the newspaper and social media that we lost a city employee and staff person. Rich Stone died last week, and I'd ask that we just have a moment of silence for Rich. He ran our transportation department. Actually, he also chaired the council on aging, which is the second floor committee or commission that was involved in the senior center, and that was how I got to know Rich, and he did a nice job with that. We're at the point where if others would like to speak, the microphone is open up here at the council. Do I ask? Okay. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Madam Secretary, would you, I suppose first we ought to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I don't get to do that, do I?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
You'd think by now I'd know better.
You're right.
Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Wieren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
I've been in so many meetings lately, and all of those you get to call for the ayes. Would you, Madam Secretary, please read the items on the consent agenda then for the record?
Approve October 8 council minutes, approve bill list in amount of $1,192,684.76, approve the July financial statements, resolution approving an agreement for tobacco enforcement services with the Iowa Alcohol Beverage Division, resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of a 2010 Dodge Ram SLT truck from Jensen Ford for $18,000 for use in the police department as a parking enforcement and pool vehicle, approve alcohol license renewals, Haley's Deli BBQ and catering in Plaza Mexico.
And then on to item G, which is motions, and the first one, would you read that, please?
Sure. We have an application for new liquor license for Opa Grill at 4 West Boone Street for a special Class D liquor license, and the owner is here to address the council and answer any questions. I would recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve it first?
I move for approval.
Second.
Good. Any discussion?
Would the owner, so the owner is here. So, Your Honor, would the owner like to come up and speak about?
Hi, my name is Ruth Cuzegueras. We're opening a Mediterranean-American restaurant on 4 West Boone Street. We'll be serving, like I said, Mediterranean food and American food. We're going to have beer and wine. We're looking forward to seeing everyone, and we've been enjoying Marshalltown. It's a very nice city. We're hoping to open by the middle of next month. We'll see, I don't know that we'll exactly make that date, but sometime next month we would like to open. We've had a little, a few delays, unfortunately with the tornado also, you know, so that set us back a little bit, but we're moving forward.
Is 4 West Boone Street the former site of the brew house?
Yes.
Okay.
It looks like the Greek flag.
Right, exactly.
Yes.
Very good.
The blue and white, yes.
I bet there are a lot of employees across the street to the north that are anxiously waiting to reopen.
Well, we're anxiously waiting to open also, and like I said, we enjoy seeing all of you there.
Predominantly Greek, did I understand?
Well, not necessarily. Mediterranean, we're going to do some other Mediterranean foods. There will be quite a few Greek dishes, and then American also, so we hope to satisfy everyone's taste buds.
It's something we haven't had that I know of, at least since 1986 when we moved here, and boy, I tell you, the restaurant choices now are just really popping out here in Marshalltown.
Good.
Welcome to town.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask, did you say you're new to the community?
Yes, I am, we are.
And did you run a restaurant in a previous spot, or is this a new venture for you?
No, this has been my job since I've gotten married 42 years ago, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? I want to call for an aye vote again, but let's do the roll call instead.
Lamer?
Yes.
Wieren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carry it. Very good. Let's go to item H, which is resolutions. Madam Secretary, please read the first one.
Resolution approving Iowa Department of Transportation pre-construction agreement for improvements to Highway 14.
I move for approval.
Second.
Very good. Discussion?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Yes, this is for resurfacing Highway 14, and the total project is about $4 million. The Department of Transportation's share is 2.3 million, and the city is going to be responsible for about 1.8 million. So DOT wants us to repay this back in three installments of $596,338.56. Road use tax dollars will be used for all this, except for the first year, we will use $148,600 in stormwater fees. Are there any questions?
Mr. Lamer?
Do we have a breakdown of what the costs are for?
Yes. In the handout, on these pieces of paper, it shows what the Marshalltown's share is on Exhibit B. It totals $1.7 million.
I understand there's a bunch of curb and gutter and a bunch of other stuff that I didn't know that we'd approved to have put in, so.
I'm going to turn it over to Jessica.
I was able to go back and look. This was actually a conversation from more than a year ago where we started talking about the medians in preparation of whether or not we wanted to include those in an engineering services agreement with H.R. Green, who, H.R. Green is the state's subcontracted engineer on this project, and it was in September, the last meeting of September of 2017, when you did approve an agreement with H.R. Green for $233,000 for the engineering services and design related to the elements that were to be city-funded in this project.
Yeah, but when did we, when did we agree to put curb and gutters back, not just put the brick faces and stuff back?
I'll let Justin handle that one.
Council Lamer, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. I don't remember the exact date, but I would be happy to find it to you. I believe it was in 2016 when I brought before you a cost estimate of roughly $1 million for these things. It's a larger share than that when you include the medians. I will find the date and let you know specifically, but yes, we discussed it in, I believe, 2016.
I know we had a long discussion, and we talked about not putting the islands back because it'd be easier snow removal and stuff for the, in the wintertime, and I thought that's where we were at.
No, we then subsequently had a discussion about putting in aesthetically pleasing medians.
Oh, that was a survey that was done, but I don't recall that we came back and approved that.
It was actually that.
We had a discussion at a council level.
That was, there was discussion at the council in August and September of 2017, and ultimately that was included in the scope of work for that engineering services agreement with H.R. Green at your direction.
That's my recollection, too.
The minutes ought to reflect it.
Okay.
I'm not sure it was unanimous.
Yeah, I'm sure it wasn't.
But I do remember that.
Any other questions of Justin?
No. Thanks, Justin.
Let's call a roll on this one.
Wieren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Motion carried.
Very good. Let's go to item number two. Please read that one.
We have two public hearings and a resolution. The first public hearing would be on the general obligation loan agreement up to $600,000. Would you like to handle those public hearings separately?
I'd rather lump them together if our city attorney will allow.
They've both been given notice. I think we can speak to the merits in one hearing.
Okay. The first public hearing for the general obligation loan agreement up to $600,000 and an essential purposes loan agreement up to $2,400,000.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to declare the public hearing open first and give the time, which by my watch is about 5:43 PM, and ask if there were any written comments received by the clerk?
There were none.
Any public comments?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I think I asked this when the first resolution was given to set the public hearing. Can anybody tell me the effect on property taxes of the tornado, because basically we're going to have to use property taxes to pay these bonds back, and how are we going to do that if our property taxes are going to drop significantly in the next two years?
Anybody care to respond?
Yeah, so to answer that question, this is a scenario in terms of repayment that has been calculated with a 1.5% valuation drop for two fiscal years, with fiscal year 2021, which would be the first fiscal year when any impact would be seen because of the property valuation years. We then left basically no valuation growth until fiscal year 2025, assuming that any rebuilding would take advantage of our 100% three-year tax abatement program. And so we've made those assumptions into this and have worked with our financial advisor on this. Ultimately, we don't know the exact impact of what the valuation reduction will look like as a result of the tornado. I've been talking with the county assessor. There are a number of heavily damaged properties, which he will be going out after January 1st of 2019 and making a reassessment on, and so it's difficult to tell what that reassessment can look like. We can look at those that we know have, we've lost, or that we know will be coming down, and we can make a judgment that there's still a land value but a $0 construct, or $0 improvement value. However, it's really going to be those properties that are heavily damaged where we won't have a firm idea of what that valuation looks like until probably sometime in mid-2019. However, in putting together the assumptions for what this looks like as an impact on our tax levy, we have made valuation reductions and then held things constant based on what we are projecting.
Thank you. Any other public comments or questions? Let's, Diana?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. I just need to make you aware of a change that is needed on the resolution. So on page 3, section 2, it says the bids will be at 10:30 on November 5, but the council meeting is at 5:30. That should say noon, so we are going to make that change if you approve the resolution. And then in the official statement, there was a change also for the listing of council members. At the top on page 51 of your document, which is part of the audit, it says City of Council Bluff, and it should say City of Marshalltown, so that is going to be corrected before it's sent out to the finance team.
I take it somebody was plagiarizing?
So I did want to make you aware of those changes.
Any questions or comments about those changes?
And I did want to also say that we are only asking for 2.4 million instead of $3 million like we originally had advertised in the newspaper for the public notice.
Thank you. Again, any other consular comments or questions? Public comment? Roll call? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, I have to close the hearing, don't I? Staff review, council comments. Declare the public hearing closed at 5:47 PM. Thank you. Let's go on to the next resolution then, please, Madam Clerk. Oh, wait, need to.
Resolution setting date.
So I move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Call second.
That's for both.
There's only one resolution.
One, sorry. I see that.
But for both?
Yeah.
Public hearings for both bonds?
Yeah.
Okay. And I heard the second, I didn't catch who did it.
Me.
Good, very good. Let's now call the roll.
For resolution setting date for sale of $2,400,000, general obligation corporate purpose bond Series 2018, and approving preliminary official statement. Roll call. Wieren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Carried. I figure by the time I'm done with this job in three and a half years, I'll figure out how to do these public hearing steps, even though there's a cheat sheet right in front of me. Would you read the next resolution, please, Madam Secretary?
Resolution setting a date for public hearing on an offer to purchase city-owned property at 213 East Main Street.
And let's declare the public hearing open at, oh, there's not a public hearing. Set a date, okay. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question on that. Is the following resolution that has been amended only applies to the Second Amendment? Is that correct? It's not an amendment of the first one with a new number?
Correct. The resolution that was originally posted in item number four, when the agenda initially went out, was not the correct resolution, and so because that email notification went out when we did post the new resolution, we wanted to note that they, it was an amended resolution.
All right. Thank you very much.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Just a quick recap and any questions that you may have. This is a proposal that we put out for, after our last council meeting, based on discussion for the parking lot on East Main Street with, because of interest associated with developing on that parcel, and so we did put out that request for proposals, which were due on the 17th at noon, and we did receive the one that I believe was in your packet. We do have representatives from Cohen Esri here this evening. Brian Sweeney is here. If you have any specific questions that you would like to answer, I'm sure he'd ask, I'm sure he'd be able to talk with you. But otherwise, if there's anything I can answer, I'd sure recommend approval to set a date for hearing.
Any questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have two. First of all, the existing property, what's going to happen to it?
I'm going to defer this one to Brian.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Lamer. So just sharing, the last several months, we've all gone through a lot of discussions with insurance folks and adjusters, and it has taken a while for us to kind of work through all the different funding matters relating to the historic building, and we think we have a way forward between the insurance dollars and perhaps some additional dollars somewhere out there. We're moving forward with the redevelopment of the historic senior housing project, and per the tax credit rules and laws out there, hurricanes and tornadoes are unusual events, and the federal government gives you a couple of years to figure out what it is that you can do, and they, so we have until October of 2020 to get those units back in, back in operation, and we plan on doing that. And our additional thought, if you're all open to it, is that we would be looking at 209 East Main and 213 East Main to develop new workforce tax credit housing product that would sit next to the senior historic credit. So we'd be looking at an additional 48 to 52 units and add to the 28 that are, that have been there, and we hope to get back in service. We hope to redevelop that entire block. Cohen Esri owns property on Church Street side in the back that we would utilize for additional parking, so that's the plan forward.
Can you please explain the, I'm sorry, is it appropriate?
The second, my second question, my second question was, could we put a date of one year if construction doesn't start within a year in this parking lot that this becomes a void issue? I think we have to get some control over what we're going to be doing downtown, and we need to know that something's going to happen, and I don't think it'd hurt anybody's feelings if we, if the agreement had something in there that said that if construction in the parking lot doesn't start within a year that the project will be void, just to protect the city and so we know that within a, less than a year, we're going to see people down there digging holes and putting up stuff.
I'm not calling you out of order, but I suspect this is something that should happen at the hearing.
Well, I was going to say, one of the contingencies that is part of Cohen Esri's offer is that they're interested in this lot if they get the tax credits, and so there really wouldn't be, we wouldn't be transferring property to them until, unless they were successfully awarded, which would be probably March of 2019 at the earliest.
Correct, and it could be April this year. Yeah.
So, and then they would have a year from then to start construction, if not, we get the lot back.
That's certainly something we can discuss as a contingency. Ultimately, we can't, you know, with, if you move forward with accepting this on November 26 would be when the public hearing would be held, that that's when, that's when we'd basically be putting forth an agreement with contingencies in place.
I think that would be a nice one to have in there, just to protect us as a council and as a city.
That's it.
Any other questions?
Yes, my question, can you please describe, will this be as the 401 or the 201 property low-income senior housing, or is there any fair market housing involved in that? Can you please describe the clientele that we hope to serve?
Yeah. So, again, this would be part of a low-income housing tax credit application to the Iowa Finance Authority, and we would be doing a family product, so we would include some three bedrooms as well as two bedrooms, and then next door would remain senior housing.
But it would all be low income?
So in the IFA process, they have you, you get points for having 10% of the unit's market rate, so we would intend to do that.
Okay, all right.
Five of those units, approximately five of those units would be market rate.
And is that only of the new units, or would it also include the old? Are we at the point that the Iowa wholesale building can become open? I can't think how long it's been since it was built. Isn't there like a five-year that you have to stay before you can offer the open market value or the market value?
It's actually 30 years.
Okay, well then I'm wrong on that. I apologize.
15 or 30 years, yeah.
Okay, but will there be any fair market in, or market value in the senior side, or will it just be in the family side?
It would be in both.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And in your existing building, there were two, I think, market rate units of the 28, is that right?
Yes.
It certainly has been a gorgeous facility. It hurts to drive by it and see how hard it got hit. Any other consular questions? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. You're talking a couple of years for all this to happen. Are you going to clean up around and in that building prior to that?
Yes. Again, we have been working mightily, even though it doesn't look like it, to get arms around the initial phase of cleanup and kind of seal the building, and that, I think you'll begin to see some activity early next week.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. Any public comment?
Do I have to come to the microphone?
You do.
Okay. G. Gordon Johnson, 2203 Governor Road, Ordinary Citizen. What is affordable housing? What, you know, you talk about it, what is the price? I mean, what are we talking about here? I mean, what's affordable? We never, we never talk about it.
I'm sure it's defined by the federal government.
Well, could you define it for us?
Michelle, do you want to field that one?
I don't know. Brian may have some to comment, but certainly with the tax credit projects, there are varying stages of income levels based on area median income, and as was discussed, a market rate unit actually is open to anybody. These aren't, just to be clear, this does not mean it's a subsidized project similar to our Section 8 program that we run. There may be tenants that are receiving a Section 8 subsidy that reside in a tax credit project, but I know that's often confused. Sometimes people think that it's a subsidized project, and that's not necessarily the case. Certainly, you could see people, individuals that are working full-time employment and still meeting that threshold for income. And I don't know, Brian, if you know offhand where any of the income limits happen to fall, but I don't, I don't remember them right offhand, and there are varying levels typically, so.
I've been told the starting teacher could qualify.
Typically.
Thank you. Any other public comments or questions? If not, let's have the roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Wieren?
Yes.
Very good. Carried. Let's go to item number five, resolution, Madam Clerk.
Resolution expressing intent to consider a development agreement with Conlon Development Group. Oh, number four.
Oh, I'm number four. I jumped ahead, sorry.
Resolution expressing intent to consider a development agreement with Cohen Esri Development Group for the construction of affordable housing units.
I move for approval, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development, again, and I'll kind of maybe jump in with Jessica if there's any comments, but this project that we just discussed obviously is within one of our urban renewal areas, which allows us to enter into development agreements for the possibility of different incentives such as a rebate situation, which is what we have discussed with this proposal, and I believe that Jessica maybe, I'll let you take the number side of.
Yeah, so what we looked at here was, as we had a number of developers that were approaching us, we felt that it was necessary to sort of set some parameters that we felt would be comfortable for the council considering new development and running some numbers here, and so that's where we put forth for this resolution, the next one you'll see, a 90% rebate of incremental taxes. rebate of incremental taxes for a 10-year period with not-to-exceed amounts. And what you'll notice, and there is a difference between these two, the resolution before you right now is a not-to-exceed amount of $275,000. And the thing to remember is, it's not as though they get a check for $275. It's if they pay... if they end up... if 90% in each of 10 years comes to a total of 275, they'll get 275. And so, it's truly about what the value of the property is and what taxes they're likely to pay, lest the debt service held out for each of us. And so, as we looked at what the frozen base values were for the parcels in question, we came up with... and they provided a likely assessed value, that's where we came up with $275,000 being that likely amount over a 10-year period based on the assumed facts that we have for us today.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I did have another comment that kind of follows Mr. Johnson's comment, that I noticed in the resolutions and in the descriptions, one term was used affordable housing, and the other was the low-income tax credits. Are those two separate things, or do they mean the same thing?
Yeah, no, they're not separate things. It's the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program is the formal program that's run through the Iowa Finance Authority. I think we commonly see language used as affordable, you know, for some respect, just because there is often a stigma associated with the term "low income" and knowing that many of the people that are served are certainly populations within our community that are a little bit higher income and still need affordable quality housing.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. Carried. Now to item number five, please.
Resolution expressing intent to consider a development agreement with Conlon Development Group for the construction of affordable housing units.
Is there a motion first?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development, again. As you can tell, we have a lot of activity going on with our development side of the world right now. And as we talked about previously, that does relate to the set aside that the Iowa Finance Authority put in specifically for Marshalltown due to our disaster. This project, unlike the previous one, does not involve any city property involvement. This is all private property being proposed, located what you may formally refer to as the property behind Walmart, which was set aside by the Hibbs family for fire department. So, there's about five-acre piece there that, if you recall, maybe two years ago, I think, maybe transferred back to the Hibbs family. That property later sold. And so, there is, again, a proposed project under the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program through the Iowa Finance Authority for that location that is within one of our urban renewal areas, so very similar to the last discussion, that we have the opportunity to look at development agreement for rebate purposes. And we do have a representative here as well from Conlon Properties, so he's, I'm sure, willing to answer any questions and maybe give you some update and presented a little bit of information about their company.
Thank you. Mr. Conlon, welcome back.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is J.B. Conlon. Address is 3721 Southwest 61st Street in Des Moines. That's where our primary office is. We've done some management up in your neck of the woods before, and after the... even before the disaster, we were looking at expanding into this, into your city. You've got, I think, some good growth here, and I believe that the city staff, our experience so far with the city staff has been fantastic. So, from a developer standpoint, that's really good to see, welcoming and whatnot. We're looking at that parcel. It's actually 6.75 acres, and it's expanded a little bit from what the fire department needed. We would look at doing two projects there, but for this purpose, we're only looking at doing one project right now. The next project would be a future project. So, we're looking at a 55-unit development, most likely senior. We're also looking at housing. Senior would be defined by an age of 55 years or older. The... it would be one building, and this TIF would... this TIF district is very helpful in allowing us to make those projects work. When we have affordable housing, of course, the affordable housing is capped. Your rents are capped, so you need some fillers of those gaps in order to be able to build a quality project and to do all the things that IFA requires of us, which is quite a bit in order to build these projects in a certain way. And so, we're looking forward to doing that and being a member of the community. You've got a... you each have a packet that talks about our resume and how long we've been in business. Is there any specific questions for us as a company or specific questions about the project that I can answer?
Will it be like other properties that I've seen down in the Des Moines area where you have a manager on site?
Correct. The bigger the property, the more likely it is that we are to have a manager on site. So, usually, we are able to put a manager on site at anything over 48 units.
Very good. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Assuming no written comment. Let's call the roll.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good. Carried, thank you. Onto discussion items. And the first listed one is the discussion about the Airport Hangar Project.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Some of you may remember, we've had discussions over the last year, possibly up to two, about our needs at the Marshalltown Airport, particularly, I think, we discussed at our strategic planning last November, and we may have discussed in open council in the last year. In our current CIP, we have funding for the design of a 75-by-75 hangar and then anticipating the borrowing to put forth our local match for the construction of a 75-foot by 75-foot hangar in what would be 2020, fiscal year 2020. As we... as myself, the airport manager, our consultant that helps us with airport things, get looking into things, we wanted to bring forth a discussion item on the possibility for a larger hangar and any appetite that the city council might have for that. One of the attachments to this is flight plans filed with the FAA documenting the size of planes that would be intending to land at our airport. We have large multinational businesses like Emerson, like JBS, that use it. We've also discussed in the past the opportunity of businesses that we don't know that aren't located in Marshalltown that may use the airport. So, you can see that we have a number of planes that, both by tail height and wing width, would still be unlikely to park overnight inside an airport hangar that was 75 feet by 75 feet. So, with the discussion and planning with Clapside and Garber and with our airport manager, we've laid out some funding scenarios, some cost options on the possibility of upsizing to a 100-foot by 120-foot building with a larger opening... a larger door opening that would allow for larger tail heights to be parked inside the building overnight. We've also laid out an option to construct a terminal with this hangar, which may be getting a little bit into the dream scenario, but wanted to lay those out for the council and just discuss appetites, let you see numbers on what costs would be, and really just get a discussion started on whether this is something we could consider or whether with our fiscal restraints, whether that's something that is not on the table. So, we have a representative from CGA, we have our airport manager, we have myself. Hopefully, between the three of us, we could answer any questions that the city council might have.
Any questions?
Can I just add to this discussion? Mayor Lorenz asked me to negotiate with the mans about the possible lengthening of the airport runway, and we've been doing that for a couple of years, just because I knew the mans and I knew, had a better handle on farming operations and the cost to do those kind of things. And in doing so, we talked to the four major users of the airport, and we asked them what was their most critical item, and their critical item was not the length of the runway, but the critical item was being able to have a hangar big enough to put the plane in, number one, and number two, having a de-icing system. And they said those two items were the most important thing that they needed right now at the airport, more than the lengthening the runway. So, with that, we stopped the discussion with the mans about lengthening the runway and left it to the design squad to decide how big of a building we need to be able to house those airplanes overnight, because right now, Swift comes in, drops their people, takes off and goes down to Newton and fills up with fuel and spends the night and comes back. We should be able to, with 28 or 2,600 employees out here at Swift and with the income they put into this city, we should be able to make it so they can at least put their plane in a hangar here so we don't have... they don't have to leave. So, that's my part of the discussion, and I would recommend that we not build a 75-by-75, but build something larger than that so we can not compete, but we can handle the airplanes coming into our airport.
Excellent summary, Councillor Lamer. And then I want to make sure that we're honest and forthright with everyone. That would require a capital out... or a monetary output on the city's behalf. We, as the city, receive money from the FAA every year for improvements. It's a set amount based on our community size, and that's really the amount of federal funding that we could accrue and use over the next two, three, four years. So, I want to make it clear that this discussion, if we're going to go forth with building a larger hangar, would require a monetary contribution on the city's behalf. We are vigorously looking for other opportunities to fund it, but I would be honest with you that I don't see anything that's going to fund 100% of these additional costs beyond what we would have in the CIP. We may be able to come up with something to fund 25,000 or 50,000 or 100,000, but we are needing, you know, I believe it's 600,000 or 700,000 to go from the 75-foot by 75-foot to 120-by-100-foot hangar, and that's going to require a contribution that's almost entirely city-funded.
To fill in those number gaps, we have $60,000 that is budgeted in our capital improvement plan in fiscal year 20. 755,000 would be our local match, and so, we will be reviewing the capital improvement plan coming up here, and so, we can decide if there's more money in that capital improvement tax levy to put towards this project, but I can guarantee you it will not be 755,000 worth. And so, this is basically asking you tonight, what do you want the scope of work to be, knowing that when we would proceed with borrowing whatever amount we would need to borrow for that 755,000 from the local side, that would not happen until this time next year, because the construction would be in 2020. And so, it's one of those where you have to tell us in advance how you'd like things designed so that we can begin our financial planning as well.
So, a quick question. There's two different funding summaries, one that includes the I-DAT. Can you just kind of run through those? What's the scenario as far as getting the additional funding? We'll still pursue that, but there were some entitlement monies that came available over the last month. Since we put this together, we've gotten direction from the FAA that those entitlement funds couldn't be used for a hangar project or a monetary generating project. It'd be more used for maintenance, asphalt needs, things like that, pavement needs. So, you're likely looking at just the top funding scenario where we have 595,000 available of entitlement funding, and then depending on the scope of the project and the cost, that likely the city is coming up with a match for the rest of that.
I know when I was on the council and had to vote, everybody looked at me like, well, yeah, you're the pilot, of course, you want the runway extended. So, full disclosure, we sold the airplane in May. I haven't flown since. But before selling the airplane, I've flown into a lot of airports around Iowa, so I've seen the improvements at Dubuque, at Mount Joy, and Davenport, at Concello Left, up in Mason City. We're competing against those folks. So, the next Menards that wants to come in here and build a plant, we need to be able to house their airplane and be an attractive-looking, like we're growing, community, which we are. But put the pilot thing aside, just from an economic growth and look standpoint, we really ought to pursue this personally.
Also, a good summary of... as your Public Works Director, I stand here knowing infrastructure needs throughout the city, streets, bridges, sewers, the whole lot, and I wrestle with this as well of agreed. It's an investment that could help the city in future gains, but it's no guarantee. So, it's a tough decision.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
It's one of those items that you don't see much of, but to keep the industry we have today and to try to get more, it's something that we have to have. And if we... if somebody looks at Marshalltown and looks at Newton, and they can fly into Newton, they can't fly into Marshalltown, and they don't have a plant either place, that's one strike against us. So, I think we need to... if we're going to be competitive, we need to just bite the bullet and build us a nice hangar so that we can be competitive with everybody else. So, I'm in favor of going ahead with a larger hangar, and we seem to be able to bond everything else, so I don't know why we couldn't bond $600,000 to build our share of the hangar.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, is the 100-by-120 kind of the industry standard, or is there a next step up? Are we ever going to catch up if there's... I mean, is that going to be sufficient for the demand that you feel we would have at our airport?
Yeah, I'm not sure I can answer your question totally, councillor, but obviously, you could build anything. It's a matter of cost. But yes, from what we're seeing in Pella, Newton, Grinnell, places here in central Iowa where those planes could land, yes, the 100-by-120 facility would make us competitive with those buildings. It's also the door height to make sure that that plane tail can still fit within the building, so yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we need a motion to direct staff to...
Can we talk about the other item that the major users of the airport were talking about? Maybe be able to put that funding for that de-icing system in with the construction? I don't know what that equipment costs, but that was... that was their... one of their really critical things that they wanted to... if they're going to be flying in here, that they wanted de-icing equipment. So, I'd like us to some way, see if we can afford to do that at the same time we do the hangar.
But between CGA and the FBO and Justin, they can do the research and...
Good, that'd be great.
We can include that as a project in the CIP as well and just see where that fits.
Okay, that'd be great.
I haven't seen the Chevrons yet on the southeast edge of the runway, but I know that it's coming, and the FAA did tell us we can't use the last 500 feet because we're too close to Highway 14. So, the 5,500 feet that we have is still too short. If it's icy or for some planes like a Gulfstream, even if the surface is wet, they still have to land someplace else. I hope down the road, 10, 15 years, we're looking at expanding that runway personally, just for letting the planes land here. Okay, do you feel like you have enough to go on here?
We would like a motion to direct staff to direct our engineering firm to proceed with the 100-by-120 hangar.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a question before that? Are we talking about just the hangar and not the terminal?
Yes.
That were the three choices on the request there, so...
And the de-icer, you were going to put in the capital plan, right?
We'll bring it forward to you as something and see where it fits into the capital plan.
We're about to hit budget season anyway. We'll get some numbers put together and propose for the CIP.
And I'm assuming we can see numbers for hangar only and hangar plus...
Yeah, we'll separate as two projects. They could easily be tied together, but for purposes of the CIP, we'll separate them.
Do you want to put a preliminary... Do you want to put a preliminary upgrade to the terminal?
Well?
Where do we stand with that?
We didn't talk about, now would be the time to do it. And that's really your third option that you have on that funding scenario. It is about a million dollars more than the second option we're talking about. And so that would be where, tonight's the night to provide that direction if you want to move forward with a terminal.
A million more?
A million more.
Yes, roughly. 950,000 is what we estimate.
Plus the 600,000 match?
Correct. So 950 beyond the 600,000.
So we're at a million and a half for it.
I should direct, on that handout, you should be looking at the bottom columns that,
is that correct on that one, Justin?
Yes, because that would only include the FAA entitlement funds, yes. So actually, we'd need about 2.3 total to build a 100 by 120 hangar and a terminal building attached to that 100 by 120 hangar.
I don't know if we, I wasn't thinking about building a total new terminal. I think about just remodeling the one we got. That's not a possibility?
It's definitely a possibility. The one thing that you've probably heard?
Why don't you give us the numbers both ways?
Okay.
On a new one and a remodel.
Pursue some things on that.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
So then I don't think we would need a motion at this time if we're going to continue to bring items back for a discussion that would be related to that engineering agreement.
Okay, that'd be great.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Before going on to the next item, I know that our fixed base operator is here in the building, and I'd like to compliment Steve Volbrecht for the nice job he does of running the airport. He's very welcoming to pilots that come in, very professional. He doesn't have a big budget, but he's made our terminal look as nice as it's ever looked. And so I just wanted to shout out to Steve for that. Let's go on to the next discussion item.
Okay, at the last meeting, you directed to put out four parcels, 213 East Main, which was one we set a public hearing on earlier. There was only the one bid received from Cohen Esri on that property. The properties of 1220 and 26 East State Street had multiple bids. And so I kind of, there's really only one that is, one before you tonight that you could accept and move forward with if you would like to do that. But I do want to run through each three of them. The first bid is from CGA for just 12 East State. This one is for 12,500 with the intentions to maintain it as a parking lot for the City Center Building and eventually construct a small building. This one is just for that lot, and this is the bid that is compliant with what was requested and has no contingencies that would prevent you from moving forward with setting a public hearing on accepting that proposal. The second bid received was for two of the parcels, 20 and 26 East State Street. It was incomplete in that it did not provide a purchase price, among other things, for the council to consider, meaning that you cannot move forward with setting a public hearing on that here tonight. The third proposal is for all three properties, 1220 and 26 East State Street for Mark Eaton, offering $100,000, but does have a number of contingencies that you would need to discuss further, including one that precludes you from discussing or taking any action on it tonight, which is that it is contingent upon the police station being part of the package. As you did at the last meeting, you set a public hearing on the sale of the police station to happen on November 12th. You can accept bids on the police station up to November 8th at 1:00 PM for those to be considered at the November 12th meeting, but ultimately, you cannot consider any other bids on that building until November 12th. And so that means that you could not act on that proposal tonight as it has a contingency, which is something that you just can't take action on tonight. You could, however, decide to table any further discussion of this, if you'd like, if you'd want to consider this after the November 12th meeting. I kind of laid out two different options for you, which I think are probably the easiest what it comes down to. CGA's proposal, as I said, is the only one that you truly could move forward with tonight. There's also potential, then, you know that there's two other bidders who are interested in 20 and 26 East State Street. You could accept CGA's proposal, which means that we would move forward at the next meeting on either the special meeting on November 5th or the regular meeting on November 12th to set the public hearing, which then has a 30-day timeframe for holding the public hearing. And then we could continue discussion with the other two parties on 20 and 26 East State Street. Or another option, because this kind of got a little confusing with having multiple bidders on multiple parcels with a number of contingencies in place on some of the bids that you can reject all bids and continue to hold the properties until downtown master plan is complete, until further conversation is had, until any point that you would decide in the future. And so ultimately, I'm recommending going forward with CGA's proposal. They presented something that has no contingencies and when holding, after holding a public hearing, would allow us to transfer that property in a timely manner.
Any discussion?
Oh, that option to accept CGA's offer is appealing. I think that will actually get that lot cleaned up a lot sooner. I really can't see it just sit like that until we've figured out the downtown plan. It's a small lot. Would take it off of city hands, which is good. I know parking is at a premium downtown, especially right now.
That's the little one right over here, right?
Yep, next to the collapsed lean-to, I call it.
It's not quite so little. It actually does extend back behind Klein Photo to the alley, so it has a weird shape to it.
Is the cleanup of the property then become the responsibility of the CGA if they purchase it, or will it be cleaned prior to that?
We have to clean it, don't we?
The debris on there is Klein Photo's debris, and so that would be something that would be part of their debris removal. That is a property where we're still not certain on what the future looks like for that, and that I don't believe a building permit has been applied for at this point. So there would be conversation to have, but that would be certainly part of their cleanup.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development. I know for certain that the part that really fell down, obviously, will be removed. The remainder of Klein Photo, they're working with structural engineers and contractors to do repairs, as far as I'm aware. But the debris part of it and all of that will be, have to be cleaned up as part of their demolition. And I think they're still finalizing some of that at this point, so.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about getting rid of all of our downtown parking, selling it all off. Once this is cleaned up, it can be used again, can't it?
Yes, certainly. That parking lot can continue to be used for public purposes. You know, one of the things to just remind you in the scope of work for the downtown master plan, we have, I think the largest section we wrote about was parking and parking-related issues downtown and looking at, you know, what are those number of spots that we should be looking at for the immediate as we go through this recovery phase, as well as, you know, in the long term, when you project out what downtown could be, especially as we're looking at a development plan, how much parking do we need to have that is publicly available parking?
With the other parcels, we have competition for all the parcels, even this one. And I think we ought to wait until after we have the public hearing on the one with the police station, because I think that one's included in Mr. Eaton's proposal, isn't it not?
It is. And so that's where I said that that is a contingency where you couldn't consider that bid tonight.
I understand.
You couldn't consider it until November 12th.
What I'm saying is, he has, his proposal also contains some use of that lot, that 12 East State Street. So why don't we just table these proposals until after that public hearing and then take a look and see where we're at?
That's certainly another option that you have. Ultimately, tonight, it was something that I felt you have one valid bid before you that if you'd want to move forward with it, you certainly can move forward with it.
I think we need to keep the parking lot for now.
Do we know what is the status of the El Puente Restaurant at 101 North Center at that corner?
Michelle Spahnheimer. I have, I don't believe that we have had any formal communication on that one in my office. The operators of the restaurant versus the ownership of the building were two different parties. I think we had maybe an initial shortly after the tornado, somebody who came in, but we haven't had any recent activity. So I can't really answer what their plans are right now.
Okay, do we have any timelines for them to make those decisions?
Not specifically with that one. You know, certainly, as we get down the road, we'll be looking at properties where there's been no activity, starting to talk about what's happening. I don't believe it was determined to be structurally unsound in that aspect. And so a lot of people are still, obviously, working through insurance companies and things like that, so there's a lot of uncertainty out there yet. So I don't have a firm date, time that we're imposing on some of those other activities right now.
And I guess, talking about that same area, the same with the Anytime Fitness? I mean, I thought, I saw a little action there, but then it?
We have been in communication with that property owner, and so they're, too, working through some different options, as we see with many of the downtown properties or properties all over the affected area for that matter. So I think within the downtown especially, we will, we see a lot of transitioning, you know, of one place maybe thinking, this is not where I'm going to be, and maybe I'll be somewhere else, maybe somebody new will be in my place, and how do those things work together as to who does what and when? But they have been, at least in communication with us.
I know that Anytime Fitness has been getting quotes for a total teardown.
Well, I was trying to decide if there will be additional properties that may come available and whether those are, again, whether those would fit into the larger plan of parking or redevelopment for other businesses in the downtown area. So that's where I was trying to get at.
Certainly, I think that's a very, that's an expected situation, I feel, within the downtown as a whole, is that we're going to have properties which are demolished completely, where an owner may not plan to rebuild. You know, perhaps that's a new opportunity for parking, if that makes more sense, or a new business redevelopment, if that is more appropriate. So I think that through the planning stages, we will learn a lot about what, at that point in time, really where things are. We're still in a very much in flux stage with a lot of these downtown properties. And so I think, given another three months, you know, we'll start to really know more as some of these buildings start to have activity, whether it's demolition or repair. And so we'll, I think a lot of that will flush out, and we'll start to see things open up that maybe we hadn't thought about before that become apparent.
Well, my initial thought would be that, you know, it may be something that a different project could come in. You know, right now, we've got these three parcels, but if there's going to be additional land at some point, which we don't know. I mean, we know that this is a gamble to say, but I would, my feeling is that at this early stage, since we don't have decisions by some of those businesses, that we might hold off to see if there's different opportunities that might work better for us.
Any other questions? Public comment? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Mike Bearden with Clapsettle Garber. I'm an officer of Clapsettle Garber and CGA Properties. We're the ones that are interested in that property. Our real concern is parking. When we had our staff at the Old Domino's Pizza, the parking at the city center was not quite so bad. They're all back now, thank goodness. But there is just ongoing parking challenges. As we get into winter, it becomes worse. As there's people cars that are over there overnight, they can't plow the snow, and so then there's less and less spots available. So we really just thought it was an opportunity for us to get some parking, and eventually we'd like to put a building up to house our vehicles that are off-site right now. So I understand your, let's see what the options are, but going into winter, we would like to have access to that parking and be able to use that. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Mayor, City Council, my name is Richard Sova. I'm president of Landover Corporation. We're an affordable housing developer. And we, excuse me, I'm choking. We've been working with city staff since, I think, a week after the announcement was made by IFA to put Marshalltown in a separate set aside. And we've been trying to assemble, actually, that entire half block that you're talking about, from First Avenue to Second Avenue, I guess, all the way along State Street. We have been able to, we've been, we were not able to get a contract on the Klein property, although we tried. The other properties, the two properties on east of the senior center, 106 First Avenue, 28 East State, both of those properties are under contract by my firm. Our proposal was to build an affordable housing project on that property, combine those two properties with the senior center properties, and have that be the first phase of development. And then the other rest of the block, the Mexican restaurant you're talking about and the parking lot north of it, we have been in contact with both of those parties. One is willing to sell. The gentleman owns a Mexican restaurant. We're not sure where he is at this point. But we would like to move forward on some type of proposal on that project. You did not see our proposal for this affordable housing project because it arrived late and was not included in your packet. So we would like to propose that project, and we would like the council to think, consider at least, going back out for another RFP on those three properties. And we'd be willing to move forward on a project at that point.
Thank you. Any questions?
So you've already secured the property on the east side of First Avenue, too, on State?
No, 106 First Avenue, that's the house on the corner of the alley, right next parking lot. And then the corner, which is 208 East State. Those two properties, we have under contract. If we could get the other, the three properties on State Street, that would be large enough to do our project as well as the required parking.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Anybody want to throw out? Yes, sir?
So Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So the proposal that I put in place basically restores the senior citizens' center and gives parking available. There's no reason that anybody couldn't use that parking. And it also eliminates a bunch of money the city has to spend, $100,000 on an elevator for the police station, $83,000 to separate the two buildings, and it restores the senior center. I'm not asking for any TIF money. I'm not asking for anything other than to grant me the insurance funds that you are taking to demolish the building. So I think that's a pretty good deal for the city and for the seniors. A lot of them want to move back there. I understand this, the senior citizens' center is a board, but they have the vote of the members to help the board make decisions. And so I'm, I think that with the 421 petitions that Linda Clark gathered, it would be a, you know, that's their goal. And it can be restored and it can be upgraded to serve the next group of seniors, which are, you know, one of the goals of the master plan is to do. So I thought I'd just come up and let you know what I was thinking.
Thank you.
Since Mr. Eaton did take that chance to describe his proposal, I do want to make you aware of-
you aware of, it was more than just the contingency on the police station in there, that there would be some other things that you would have to change. Specifically, there's a 10-year, um, tax abatement requested. That currently does not exist in the downtown area, so you would be amending our tax abatement program in the downtown area. I'm assuming he's requesting a 100% tax abatement. All that exists currently is a 100% three-year tax abatement. So, you would be making some significant decisions there that would impact the financial future of the city and any rebuilding that would happen in the downtown area, um, for the foreseeable future. So, it's not as though you can just offer that to a single project. Um, with tax increment financing, you do have flexibility to offer that to a single project. Specifically with the police station, he's talking about a triple net lease, uh, which would require us to be responsible for maintenance. And I think as you have all sat up here and we've talked, one of the reasons we do want, want to own that building is because of the ongoing maintenance with it, um, and, you know, sort of, uh, a lack of use that it fulfills for, for us. And so, um, that, those were kind of two really big ones that stuck out in addition to, um, the fact that it was contingent upon all three properties, as well as the police station and just being that date. So, there are a few things there where you would be taking on some, some major fiscal policies in the downtown area if you were to accept his offer as well, at a time when you could accept his offer.
Other public comment?
Brandon Goken, 311 and a half, uh, South Third Street, Apartment 1. Um, I had a couple, a few things to say about the, uh, um, East 20 State Street. Um, first off, I know that there's been a lot of, uh, attention for urban development, turning it into housing. I think that yes, that's a good idea, but as far as the property itself, the location, may not be always the greatest idea. I know everybody wants to press forward because it's in such a bad shape, but we're talking about a building that has been around before World War II even. It has a very historical importance, um, as you all are aware of. Um, I've also know that as the city of Marshalltown, there is a large group of elderly people, and there is, um, just as much, um, as interest for jobs and such as well. I mentioned it earlier, um, this year to, um, Leon Lamer, that, uh, there, um, that as one job that we could create that would keep revenue in this community, was to do sidewalk removal as part of the side of the, uh, Marshalltown Road, um, clearing for the snow. I would think that, um, a large community, these elderly people, this is my assumption, I don't know where else they would be coming from, are people that own houses getting too old to do that kind of stuff. I think that a lot of them would like to stay there, but it's just their condition, you know? It gets hard to do shoveling. I would know, I'm still young and it's hard. It's not an easy job at all. Um, but this building, we, it's been used for many times over different purposes, and I think that, um, innovation has been one of my favorite things about living in this town, even as a child, the innovation that we have to keep going and stay as a town, even though we call ourselves the city of Marshalltown. That's something that, that if we were to remove this building, we'd be changing, moving towards a city and not away from our own roots. And I feel that this is something of importance of honoring our history and our roots and rather than discrediting and forgetting about it, you know? I just feel that it does have some bearing and importance, and we do need to think outside of the box so, one time or another.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Lee Botter, 401 Orchard Drive, and it's hard to follow Brandon because it was excellent. Um, the bottom line is I've had the opportunity to, um, review the information with Mr. Eaton and kind of the plans. It is a very creative solution to identify a lot of needs for a lot of people. It's gonna identify the parking needs. It's gonna identify, uh, re-putting back into place the Senior Citizens Center, which can be used for other nonprofit organizations. Um, I think it's a way that we can develop some community pride. I would like us to go that route, and I would like council and would encourage you to put things on hold until you can look at the police station factor and actually the, uh, proposal on the table from Mr. Eaton, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay.
Is this a time that we can speak as well?
It is.
I would, I, I would like to, um, with the explanations I've heard tonight, I would like to commend Mr. Eaton for the, um, creativity that's, that's going into this. And I, um, would, I, I think with this information, I wanna know more information about what would entail, um, you said it would, would change some things in our, in our tax abatement or our codes, and, and I guess I would like to know more information. So, my spot would be, or my information would be to see if we can get some more information and see if, if that is a viable, um, way to go, or, um, and then be able to make a better informed decision at that point.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Lori Kirschbaum, and I live at 108 North 15th Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. And I am a person that does attend the Senior Citizens Center, and, um, I've had, uh, a lot of, uh, welcomed, uh, nights there, a penny bingo, and, um, it's just not the same without being at our, at our facility. Um, I, uh, am hoping that, that, um, some alternative can be found to, uh, deal with this so that we can have that, that, uh, uh, facility back. Um, I have another issue, and I don't know if this is the correct time to bring it up or not. So, please, um, tell me if I'm out of order, and I'll sit down and wait. Um-
You don't have to be germane at this point.
Okay, okay. Well, anyway, um, you were talking about, um, recovery plan for Marshalltown, and I was hit by the tornado also in my neighborhood and the neighborhoods, neighbors around me. And, uh, just recently, I received a nuisance, uh, warning for, uh, debris that was in my driveway and a vehicle that wasn't plated. Um, I have only got my roof done. I've been in a cardiac unit. My son suffered, um, an injury, an illness, while we have been, um, trying to get everything done and through the insurance companies. And I'm just asking, I guess, the city of Marshalltown, um, uh, we're having problems with the insurance company following ordinance that the city has put forth for our garage. They don't wanna put up a fire wall that's about, about 12, I would say a foot between my neighbor's garage and I, and they said that they would not follow any city ordinance, and yet my family and I are trying to do what's right. And so, we're fighting that, and I am just now trying to get my siding up, and now I'm really conscientious about, uh, having siding sitting in my own driveway and, uh, what debris I have to get rid of. And yet, I walk downtown and I see the debris that's sitting out, and the way it made me feel was that, um, I, I mean, and I have a garbage bill to show that I paid to have a lot of icky debris or filth or junk or garbage removed. And at this point, I don't have that, but I have debris that's coming off of my house and maybe continued debris because I'm gonna be in this action with the insurance company because they aren't gonna budge, and I'm probably gonna have to budge and do something different. But yet, I may have to seek lawyers, uh, I might have to seek some kind of attorney, uh, representation so that I know that I'm in Sydney or, I'm under city ordinance and following the ordinances of the city that the insurance doesn't wanna follow. And so, I'm just saying, there's neighbors upon neighbors that have junk and garbage and debris. They're all around me. They're still putting their roofs up. They're doing their siding. They, they, and I, and I drive, I drive by it every day, and they're not done yet. And it's gonna take a while before we can get back. We are strong, Marshalltown's strong, but we do need more time to, to reconcile this. It just doesn't happen overnight. And, and I know, uh, maybe not everybody's been affected by it, but when you have to live through it every day, I had water damage in my house too, and I'm gonna have the ceilings coming down here in, in probably two or three weeks. And I'm gonna have all that dre- debris, tons of debris that I'm gonna have to haul out. So, I'm just asking for some leniency as far as, I don't know if it was a neighbor that turned me in or, or what it was, but I'm just asking that we could also have a plan, the, the rest of the neighborhoods could have a plan along with the city and have some leniency on some of this debris removal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The mic is still open? Okay.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
We approved a number of, of possible projects tonight. What is the deadline for those projects to go to the state? And when will we know which ones they've picked?
November 1st is the initial deadline, and then, um, as we said, probably March or April of 2019.
Next year, before we know which projects they picked.
Right. So, the preliminary, uh, is November 1st. Uh, then the full application for those projects is January 16th, I believe. Um, so, in between that time, developers will have the opportunity to, you know, determine whether or not they're gonna, uh, pursue a full application.
So, will they know in that period of time who, which ones were picked?
Uh, not until, not until that April timeframe that was mentioned.
Really? So, they, they may have to put a full project packet together-
Correct.
And with not knowing that they're even gonna get it yet.
Correct. I mean, it's a competitive application round, just like many other programs out there, and so, um, that's always, uh, something that developers will vie for, was, you don't know. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments by the council?
I wasn't gonna bring this up after all this serious stuff, but, uh, I'll be back to talk about feral cats. I don't know if anybody realizes that a businessman left town about 10 years ago and let go 100 cats when he left town, out of his business, and think about how many cats there are now. And I'm gonna find out some more information on this, but we'll talk about later, but we give people tickets for dogs running loose. Isn't there city ordinance against cats? Okay, just thought I'd whet your whistle on that one.
Thanks.
And I, I apparently missed a discussion item number two about-
That we just didn't conclude it before moving on to public comment.
Okay. Yeah, we, we didn't give any staff direction on the, uh, East State Street proposals.
I think we decided to hold off, didn't we?
Well, I would move, is it appropriate to do a, I would move that we hold off and get some additional information on, um, I would like to see the additional information on the effect of Mr. Eaton's proposal, and also, is it possible to see the other, um, to see the other proposal for the housing unit that came, arrived later? Is that just off the table? I need to know procedurally.
I mean, procedurally, we had posted that things were due by noon. Um, it did not arrive until the next day, and so ultimately, if you decide that you want to see that, um, you know, and you want to potentially consider that, that would be your direction to, to give me that that's what you want to do. Otherwise, it does not meet rules, so there, it did not meet sort of what we had posted, so therefore, I did not include it in the discussion for tonight.
One, oh, go ahead.
So, would an appropriate motion be to delay, uh, open request for proposal at a later date once, well, once people can submit proposals to meet the criteria since they've obviously understood the feedback, and two, after the meeting for the police station and the outcome of it?
That's, I, I mean, that's another option to basically direct us to reissue proposals to be due on November 12th essentially. Um, yeah, that's a, that's another option. Or to be discussed on November 12th, so they'd be due prior to November 12th.
Is there a consensus first on Sue's motion to, uh, delay, uh, processing these applications?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Zero second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
On motion to table it till... Lamer?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, Gary, that gives the staff direction, and, uh-
Was there a second motion regarding the RFP redo?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if you wanna just stick with the proposals you have before you now and bring those back to the November 12th meeting for, um, further discussion with, uh, additional information related to the contingencies of each one, or would you like us to reissue the request for proposal?
I would move to reopen the request for proposal.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call?
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Motion carried.
Anything further on that discussion item? Okay.
No, Your Honor.
We've kind of already had the public comment session, but I suppose to follow the agenda correctly, I should ask again if anybody else wants to approach the microphone. Seeing no one running up, let's, uh, clear. Oh, all right. You gotta be faster than that, Gary.
Hey, I just had a birthday. I'm too old.
Uh, Gary Thompson, 601 East Main. Hey, I guess I have two quick questions and then, uh, a statement. Um, the red doors stickers that were put out by the structural engineer, what was the deadline on that for those owners to get back with you? Was that October 15th?
The September ones had October 15th.
And then, we, we, will we get an update on that, Bethany? I mean, do we know, have they, have all of those 50-some responded back to what their plan is? I know, uh, Mr. Sweeney didn't have an answer yet because he's still dealing with the federal government on his, but-
I don't know how, how that first round is looking, but they probably, Micah probably has a good update.
Yeah, I, I probably should have, because we went into public comment, read the admonition about that again, too. You wanna go ahead and read it?
Yeah. The members of the public make, make comments on any item which is not in the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach the microphone, state name and address. Comments limited to three minutes unless the longer comment is authorized by me. Speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. The mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in the public comments in order to comply with the open meetings law.
So, Bethany was out of order.
Yeah.
And she's been doing this way longer than I have.
And she's the mayor pro town?
Yeah.
Well, I had more license last time around.
You did, and I hear you didn't use this.
Let me, let me, hey, wait a minute, restart it, because Bethany was out of order. Uh, let me rephrase that then. Would you please give us an update on those that went out in September of if you have heard back from the 50-some, you know, their plans? Um, because I guess, in defense of Lori, um, I think those would have a little more precedent than somebody who is working on their house. Um, second thing is, um, I just wanna make a comment. Don't use TIF for development that's not city development. I mean, you know, you're talking about you can't fund the, the hangar at the airport, but you're gonna give $275,000 in TIF to two developments. Are we that hungry for development that we have to give it away? And, uh, the third thing quickly is, um, I was frustrated that I didn't get the response I expected from my email about setting some guidelines for all this construction. There is no standard, all these people working on their buildings and things, everybody's doing something different. So, I was advised by the attorney general- So, I was advised by the Attorney General's Office to reach out to the state ombudsman office and I spoke with Bert Dahmer. And he asked me for more information, which I will have to get to him, about the city's enforcement of ordinances and lack of ordinances. And he asked me tonight to just tell you upfront that I have been in contact with him. And so, I'm doing that for Bert. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. John Blabam, building owner at 108 and 110 West Main here in town. I was hoping to use this machine. I don't know if I can. Will we be able to do that?
We've got an expert on the Elmo.
I'm hoping I can just put a, what I do is just put a picture right on. Okay. As we wait for Elmo, I can probably tell you what I'm here for. I showed up at the last meeting and followed up on Gary Thompson's email to the city council members, of which we got one response and that was from the mayor. It was in regards to our lack of parking or the blocking of our street from 102 till about 114 West Main. The construction company there, Brycon, has been blocking the street off every day from about 7 till 5:30, maybe 6, whatever. We have two businesses there, ours and Main Street Antiques across the street, that literally have no parking. We also have no access to our street, down the street during the day. We recently had Marshalltown strong, day a week ago, Saturday. And again, our block was blocked off. We didn't feel so strong. We just felt, Channel 5 actually did a still shot of our corner and used it on their news to say some parts of Marshalltown are still under construction, which reinforced our problem. We need some parking and we would like some access to our street. I'm showing you one picture. This is what it looks like as you come down from the east. It looks like a street and a construction area that's completely closed. We've been told that a construction company or anybody has a right to close off a street from 8 till 5 during the day, Monday through Friday. We don't, and I've not been able to find that ordinance anywhere within the city and, and who decides that? Or who decides to block off a street other than, I understand, the police chief? This, what I'm showing you is the lack of parking again on the east side of the Ibiza nightclub. That fence has been sitting there since the tornado. Nothing has happened, but that fence takes away about six parking spaces from us on the east side. Now, we've heard that the reason that that has to be there, that our street has to be blocked, is because we need to protect pedestrians and traffic. Now, this is shots from just last week. This is outside City Hall. There's no blockage of a street. This is another shot here in the city, if you can see it. A scissors lift where there's no pedestrian block. There's no block in the street. People are free to travel. I can show you another picture here where there's no block to the street. People can walk underneath the skylift. These are all from last week. This is right across the street. I think it's a CenturyLink building. Their crane is sticking out into the street. There is no street blockage. We're not protecting pedestrians or traffic or anything. As I've been told, that's the reason we have to block off our street. I continue to go on. I can show more pictures. I can show City Hall. We're not blocking out the street there. But yet, we've been told we have to be patient. The construction project across the street, I appreciate that their stores were damaged. Mine was too. And I worked really hard to get it back up. Six weeks, working day and night to get it open. And now that we're open, we don't have public traffic and we don't have parking spaces. The construction company has put their own sign underneath the stop sign saying "one-way street," when other citizens in town are having a petition, a petition signed to get Church Street changed to a two-lane road. Why do we have to petition when we should just be able to put up a sign to say "one-way street" or "two-lane road"? That's where I'm at. It seems to be a Wild West town and on top of it, our business is being penalized. I don't know how else to say it. Because of the construction and the lack of follow-through from the city to say, yeah, this shouldn't be blocked. We should help everybody out. Or there should be some kind of compromise worked out. That's what I'm asking for. I, I know life isn't fair. I, I know that's not how it works, but we're asking for something along the same lines that the other businesses downtown get, running skylifts, moving cranes out into the street and what have you. I understand interruptions now and then, but having our street blocked every day will put us out of business. And that's what I got to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Well, we have some events coming up at the library. Sorry, Sarah Rosenblum, library director. Maybe this could help a little. And we have great parking. Thank you to the foresight of the community. On Saturday at 2:00, we have Kathy Wilson, who is a historian, who's going to be doing a program about the Salem witch trials. And then, on Sunday at 2:00, we're having Claude Bourbonne, who is a noted European guitarist. Both programs are open and free to the public. So, both at 2:00 Saturday, Salem witch trials and Sunday's our wonderful musician that's going to be there at 2:00 and we hope that you all come and visit us.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else? We are adjourned at 7:08 PM. I know that Mr. Conlin stuck around, so if any of the councilors have any questions of him, he can answer them.